We're going to call to order the September 22nd Planning Commission meeting. First item of order is an adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Bob?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next item is the approval of the September 8th, 2016 minutes. Hopefully we've had a chance to review and if any additions, changes, we need to note those now. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved and submitted to us.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next item is the recognition of council members, and I don't know who has walked in the room.
Captain Marjorie.
All right. And, great.
I've got a couple of them right here.
The question is whether you want to come up now or whether you want to wait and come up with your items.
I'll wait until my items come.
Okay. Kathleen?
I'll speak at the end of the night.
Okay.
Counselwoman Davis.
Okay.
Always like to go when you're fresh. My name is Nancy Van Reese, I'm the Councilwoman in District 8, and I'm here to speak on behalf, excuse me, speak on behalf of the Maybell, I believe it's 20 A, B, and C projects that we'll be hearing about a little bit later in the agenda, so I want to talk to you about it now as the day goes on. And if I understand, that is being pulled from consent, so, yes, okay. Just wanted to make sure. I wanted to let you know that we have had two community meetings in regard to this issue, and both of them have been very productive. There's been strong communication about exactly what's going to happen in Phase 3 of this, and so I know that we're on Phase 2 today, and I wanted to make sure that I draw your attention to the community support that I have seen. I also wanted to, on behalf of Mark North, a former school board member, I believe he received his email or note to the planning staff, but I wanted, because he cannot be here tonight, he's actually a coach for the Jerry Baxter Women's Volleyball Team, so, go Eagles, because he can't be here tonight, but I wanted to go ahead and put that as a matter of public record, and speak on behalf of Mr. North, who is now also the president of a committee called Altogether Madison. Altogether Madison is a kind of roundtable, if you will, of community leaders in Madison. It's named Altogether Madison because of the late J.D. Elliott said, you know, "If you guys are going to do something, you've got to get all together on it," and so that's why it's called that. Speaking Mark's words here, I'm writing to voice my support of the proposed historic overlay at 1020 Gibson Drive in Madison. As a longtime resident and business owner in Madison, I have a deep respect for Madison's history and its landmark locations. I also see a positive trend for both residential and commercial development in the area as a renaissance is on the horizon for Madison. The community is pulling together to help shape that bright future with a due respect of its glorious past. In my opinion, the proposed overlay serves both to protect the historic nature of the property on Gibson and to support viable and suitable uses that will benefit the entire community as well as protect its heritage. That's from Mark North, President Altogether Madison. Again, on behalf of the folks in District 8, I speak to my approval in regard to this moving forward, and I look forward to more comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Davis, are you coming up now or are you going to wait? Big decision. You're going to wait?
I have a word.
Okay, okay. Anybody else that we've missed? Okay. Next item, next item is the list of items that have been deferred or withdrawn.
We'll start with the deferral agenda. The first item on the deferral agenda is item number 1, 2016 Z 019 TX 001 on page 6 of your agenda, telecommunication facility uses. It's a request to amend Title 6 and Title 17 pertaining to telecommunication facility uses. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the August, October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item 2A, 2014 CP 010 001, the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan Amendment. A request to re, a request to amend the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan for properties located at 1109 and 1111 Montrose Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. The associated case, item 2B, 2014 SP 083 001, the Howe Corner Becker Corner Offices SP. It's a request to rezone from R8 to SPMU zoning for properties located at 1109 and 1111 Montrose Avenue to permit a mixed-use development. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the August 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item 3A, 2016 CP 03, 013 003, the Antioch Priest Lake Community Plan Amendment, is a request to rezone the, or to amend the Antioch Priest Lake Community Plan Amendment by changing from T3 Neighborhood Maintenance to District Industrial Property located at 12802 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff's recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And the associated case, 3B, 2016 SP 056 001, the Colorburst SP. A request to rezone from AR 2A to SP IND zoning on the same properties. Staff's recommendation is to defer indefinitely. On page 7 of your agenda, item number 4, 2007 SP 150001 Evans Hill, is a request to amend a previously approved SP for properties located on Tulip Grove Road and Valley Grove Road to permit up to 180 single-family lots and 160 multifamily units. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 5, 2016 S 136 001, 2811 Wimbledon, is a request for concept plan approval to create two lots on property located at 2811 Wimbledon Road. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the August 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. I'll note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Item number 6, 2016 S 152 001, Inglewood Estates, is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 1126 Stratford Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 7, 2016 S 160 001, the George Borough Subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at 1003 Curdwood Boulevard. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 8, 2016 S 171 001, the Glen Echo Subdivision, is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 1732 Glen Echo Road. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 9, 95P 025 002 Millwood Commons, is a request to revise the preliminary plan or for final site plan approval for a portion of planned unit development. Overlay District for property located at Bell Road and Blue Hole Road to permit 280 residential units. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. I'll note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Item number 10, on page 8 of your agenda, 2016 Z 028 PR 001, is a request to rezone from CS and RS10 to MEG zoning for properties located on Atrium Way, Laramore Drive, and Adair Road. Staff's recommendations to defer indefinitely. Item number 12, 2016 Z 101 PR 001, is a request to rezone from R20 to MHP zoning for property located on Dickerson Pike. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item 15, on page 9 of your agenda, 2016 Z 018 TX 001, is a request to amend Title 17 to delete adult entertainment as a use permitted through overlay within MUIAs districts. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 27th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 19, on page 10 of your agenda, 2016 S 199 001, Haney Central Park Plan Resubdivision, is a request to amend a previously approved plat by amending the building height restrictions. Staff's recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item 29, on page 12 of your agenda, the 2017 Planning Commission filing deadlines and meeting schedules. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the October 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. We've heard the list of items to be deferred. Any, any comments?
I'm ready.
Of all the, yes. 1, 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 15, 19, and 29. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Great. Okay. Our next item is the consent agenda.
First, a legal notice. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Also, as a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is item number 14 on page 9. It's 2016 Z 015 TX 001, Definition of Financial Institution. It's a request to amend Section 1704060 pertaining to financial institutions and alternative financial services. Staff's recommendation is to approve with a substitute. Item number 16, 2016 SP 039 002 Bento Box, is a request to amend a preliminary SP for properties on 3rd Avenue South to permit a mixed-use development with up to 89 residential units and a maximum 8,500 square feet of non-residential uses. Staff's recommendation is to approve the conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item 18A, 9D 82P 001, is a request to cancel a planned unit development located at 1132 Shelton Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to approve. And the associated case, 18B, on page 10 of your agenda, 2016 S 164 001, the Inglewood Place Resubdivision, a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at 1132 Shelton Avenue. Staff's recommendation to approve with conditions. Item 22, on page 11 of your agenda, is 2016 Z 103 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from MUN to MULA zoning for property located at 307 Wilburn Street. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item number 23, 2016 Z 105 PR 001, is a request to rezone from IG to MUIA zoning on properties located at 520 and 600 Cowan Street and 1437 Cowan Court. Staff's recommend, recommendation is to approve, and I'll note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. On item 27, page 11 of your agenda, 2016 Z 109 PR 001, is a request to rezone from R10 to CSA zoning on properties located at 2138 and 2142 Murphysboro Pike. Staff's recommendation is to approve. And item 28 on your agenda, on page 12, 2016 Z 111 PR 001, a request to rezone from IWD to MUGA property, or zoning on property located at 521 and 545 Great Circle. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Then under Other Business, also on page 12, item 30, a contract between the Greater Nashville Regional Council and the Nashville Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission acting on behalf of the Nashville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization for conducting regional planning services. Item 31, a contract between the Nashville Civic Design Center and the Planning Commission acting on behalf of the NPO for communication and outreach. Item number 32, a contract between the TMA Group and the Planning Commission acting on behalf of the NPO for administration of an air quality education and outreach program. Item 33, a contract between the Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce and the Planning Commission acting on behalf of the NPO for regional communication and outreach. And finally, item 37, to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items.
Okay. Can we run through this once more?
Sure.
And I think this is what I have on the list. Item 14, item 16, items 18A and 18B, item 22, item 23. I don't know if you pulled 24.
Yeah.
You did.
It was pulled.
It's pulled, okay. So, item 27, item 28, item 30, 31, 32, 33, and 37. Any discussion? All in favor? What, what? All right, all in favor? Okay, so it looks like we are going to be hearing 11, 13, 17, 20, A, B, and C, 21, 24, 25, and 26.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Just in case anyone's here for any of the other items, this is the full list of what we're going to hear tonight, so unless you want some good entertainment, you're welcome to be on your way.
All right, thank you. Item number 11 on the agenda tonight is a zone change request for various properties in East Nashville. The requested zone change is to go from R6 to RM40A. The properties are highlighted in red. This is located along Alvira Avenue, just west of Gallatin Pike and north of West Trinity Lane. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. This request was deferred at the July 14th, August 11th, and September 8th Metro Planning Commission meeting. No public hearing was held. The existing zoning is R6 that would allow roughly 52 units of 42 lots with 10 duplex lots. The proposed zoning is going to RM40A, which is multifamily residential, and would allow up to 233 units. The policy is neighborhood-evolving. This policy is intended to create and enhance urban neighborhoods that fit in with the general character of the existing urban neighborhoods, with opportunities for housing choice and improved pedestrian and vehicular connectivity. The proposed zone change is not consistent with the policy in this location. This area is surrounded by an established one- and two-family neighborhood. It is not adjacent to a corridor. It does leapfrog from the areas where immediate growth is appropriate to the back of a one- and two-family neighborhood. And due to the large number of lots in the request, coordinated development may not be possible. In front of you is a wider view of the area. The items proposed to be zone changed tonight are highlighted in blue over here, if you can see that. As you can see, Gallatin Pike is to the east, Trinity Lane is to the south, and a railroad track abuts the western property lines. The Gallatin Road and Trinity Lane, Trinity Lanes are major mixed-use corridors. If additional density is going to be requested in this area, it should be closer to the corridors. And if this area were to redevelop in the future for multifamily, it should be, it should work its way from the corridors going in. Here are some street shots of Alvira Avenue and of Keeling Avenue as this goes, is it a butts into Alvira Avenue. This proposal, which could add intense multifamily development, is premature and is inconsistent with the surrounding development pattern. Staff recommends disapproval as the proposed multifamily zoning is not appropriate, given the site's location, and therefore is not consistent with policy.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Davis, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, fellow council members, planning staff, fellow neighbors and community members. I thank you for your volunteering and the hard work, and once again, I thank the planning staff for all their hard work and extra time they spent working overtime with no extra pay. I'm greatly appreciative of my Metro employees. As you see here, you're probably wondering, okay, RM40. Okay, Scott, what's the catch here? You know, what's going on? And you've probably seen before, which many of my neighbors have told me, why do you get a lot of disapproved bills? Fortunately, thank you to a good leader like Mr. Doug Sloan and other members of the Council and other planning staff members like Mr. Logan, Mr. Swagger, Bob, and many others, which I can't see, especially Anita, who I'm probably working to death now with all my policy amendments. I appreciate her. And Chairman Allen for being our chair for the planning staff, for the planning council staff members, for our, our planning committee. For the last, was it, two, a year and a half, or it seems like a year, we've been having these ad hoc affordable housing meetings. And I brought little notes with me this time so I could have dates correct, to make sure that we could see a timeline here. And I do have some available for anybody who wants one, and I may have to make more copies. On June 8th, you know, this area is my East Hill neighborhood, one of my 10 active neighborhood associations. Fortunately, they meet every other month now instead of every month, but on those days that they meet, we've been having our ad hoc affordable housing meetings. And on June 8th, I sent an email to the current president, who was the vice president then, and the other president moved, and then Officer, who's a very wonderful lady, great neighbor, great friend of the neighborhood, Shan Canfield, stating, "Hey, some homeowners on Thomas and Alvira are wanting a dual affordable housing project." And she was very gracious. They've sent me that, "Well, we're meeting every other month now, and our next meeting is going to be on July 13th." That was sent the day after I met with a wonderful couple that I've known before, known for a while, Bill and Teresa, who own, own four out of those six or seven properties. And as you can see, most of those, most of that property is vacant right now. And one of the neighbors who's here tonight was also, you know, part of that group that said, "Hey, I'm tired of all these tall, skinny HPR lots that they're building. Who can afford these 400,000, the $350,000 homes?" And I'm, and I look at them, I'm like, "Well, that's tough, but that's the current zoning." We looked at doing a contextual overlay about a year ago, and in the, for East Hill, and some neighbors wanted it, some didn't. There was more neighbors at that current meeting who didn't want it, so we decided to wait on that. And I was more than willing to do a contextual overlay or something to control the HPRs, but as we all know, your house is worth more when you could build two lots, two additional homes instead of one. And what's happened since then, you know, especially on Thomas and Anderson, those streets, the HPRs have kind of taken over. And the HPR lots, they don't, they're not, they're not required to build sidewalks or additional infrastructure improvements. I know Metro and Public Works requires some things to be done, but overall, you know, you're building a bigger, expensive home, you know, which may align with the character, but it does nothing for affordable housing. In that area, I had a lot of renters that were displaced, and, you know, we helped them move. Some people that have helped me move some of the displaced people still in the district are here today. And just going over there and then just getting, you know, beat up, like, "Why are all these HPRs? Why is there nothing affordable?" Unfortunately, on the next East Hill meeting on July 13th, we had our, we had our Affordable Housing Ad hoc Roundtable, which the developer of this property attended. I sent, and I was at this meeting too, because I'm on that committee. I sent Charles Badger, who was my campaign manager, to let them know, "Don't worry, I'm going to be deferring this," you know, because I know they've not came in front of the East Hill group. At first, I didn't think I sent a note to let them know this was coming, because of the budget and all the other stuff, I, you know, my head was swimming. But I looked back at my notes, my emails, and it's like, "You know what? I did let them know that this was coming." And the neighbors that own that property, of course, they're in support, because they're going to get a lot of money, and that's just bottom line. However, though, when looking at the need for affordable housing in the area, the only way that we can get real affordable housing without being sued, which the Beacon Center, I think, was the one that threatened to sue us for passing that legislation, thank you, Ms. Logan, thank you, Doug, thank you, Bob, for helping us with that legislation. But more importantly right now, there's a proposed 200 units here. They're probably not going to get to build 200 units. After having to widen Keeling, do all the sidewalks, and doing not two, but three traffic lights now, and now putting sidewalks on Dozier, I'm holding the developer and the homeowner accountable. I want 12 real affordable units. And right now, I have 10 neighbors, five that are renters that live in my district, five that used to live in my district, filling out paperwork, and when we come to council on second reading, their friends that live in other districts, and those people and their families that live in the district, they're signing contracts for their real affordable housing. This is how it works, and we don't have to get sued over it. Okay? I'm your Realtor, you're the owner of this property. Three bedroom, two bath. Some people say 250, that's affordable. 300, that's affordable for that. Not really. So what I ask the developer, what is your hard cost? What is it going to cost you? $110 a square foot is on average what they're costing to build right now. Okay, give me 12 units at your hard cost. If it's 1,200 square feet for that two-bedroom, two-bath, I want the affordable unit at 130,000 dollars. And I want it for this person who's gone through the Economic Center that the mayor's office put in my district. I want it with this bank who's willing to put their money in first, you know, for this person, and I want a real estate contract from you before I pass this on third reading. And I also want you to come to my, our committee, you know, to let them know your progress, you know, of what is going on, how many of these affordable units you have under contract, and I want those people to fight for their affordable housing. Because they need to tell you and tell our council members, "I'm getting one of these units. I have a contract. I'm buying a three-bedroom, two-bath house for $130,000 in East Nashville, into urban core." And my contract with this, my Realtor and with the owner's Realtor ensures that. And also, the title company has ensured that I can't sell this house for a higher margin in, until 15 years, 10 to 15 years, depending on how old my kids are. And so I don't turn around next week after buying this new hardy board and everything, all the finishes, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath, you know, there's different units, different sizes, you know, for $300,000 next week. That's the goal here, and to do the infrastructure improvements that we're acquiring. They're going to have to put about $2 million in sidewalk. And the great thing about that, and for the sidewalk, all the improvements, they can't get their use and occupancy permit until that's done. That's what we're putting into SP. And as a lot of you have seen, you know, we've started here at RM40, at RM20, and I've taken it to do a regulatory SP several times already. And one of the things is, and we've come back for approvals, we're probably not going to get 200 units. Even if we get 115, or 100, or 98, I'm going to get my 12 affordable units, in real affordable units, or this project will not get done. You know, my people are going to get their sidewalks, they're going to get their three traffic lights, or it won't be done. Before, if you remember, three years ago, we had the Birchwood Bungalow. They didn't want to do what the neighbor said. They didn't want to provide any affordable housing, they didn't want to do all the improvements. They were great houses, the guy was great for landmark homes, but it didn't fly. And I know we're taking up a lot of time, and I know I have a minute, a minute left, but the goal here is, I know I'm going to get a disapproval. I know that we're going to need a lot of stuff done. But if we're going to want true affordable housing that they can't sue us over, that we can guarantee that we can put a face to this, and that you can't get your UN occupancy permit until those three million, that million dollars of sidewalks are done on Alvira Keeling, the widening of Keeling, my three traffic lights, and then my sidewalks on Dozier. And then what other improvements that Public Works, Dean's Fitz? And the goal is to take it back in front of our East Hill neighbors, who I believe their next full meeting is not till November, and get their final seal. You know, we've, we've got to do something about affordable housing. Where else am I going to have this much open land in the back? You know, and, and a developer that's willing to get on a contract to do this. So, listen to my neighbors. I love everyone that's here, even in support and opposition. Let's make this work, or it's just not going to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Does he have time to review that? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anyone here that's speaking in favor of this? Please feel free to come step up, and if you don't mind lining up, so we can move through you pretty quickly. Come on up to the, I think so. You're in support, correct? Okay. And you'll have two minutes, and if you can state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ben Jordan. My address is 1011 North Fitz Street. Today, I stand in support of this particular project, realizing that it's probably going to be disapproved, but realizing that this is a community that has historically been a very affordable community. We've lost several affordable units in the community, and Nashville, per the Nashville Next Plan, has said that it should be a priority. We've lost several affordable units in the community and Nashville, per the Nashville Next Plan, has said that it should be a priority to have a variety of housing options, part of those housing options, diversity in pricing. And I believe um this particular district in the last, since two thousand and ten, there've only been one hundred and seven units built, new construction. Of those one hundred and seven units, only eleven have been within an affordable housing, housing range. Right now, currently, there's only three active listings in an affordable housing range in that district. All three are not new construction. Nashville believes in affordable housing. We believe in, 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 in density and, and having transportation. And, and the opposition for the community is that it's going to create traffic. Everyone hears that. Everyone in Nashville knows that we've got traffic issues. But the traffic issues presses the issue for us to address it. This project is a good project simply because by adding twelve affordable units, they've automatically, soon as they complete it, they've already accomplished what we haven't been able to accomplish in six years in the district. So I realize you guys are kind of hand tied, but it's just an emotional appeal to, if we really believe that Nashville needs affordable housing, we've got to at some point let the rubber meet the road and, and get outside of the box in terms of uh the zoning for some of these properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Jackie Sims. I don't live in the district, but I've worked very closely in the district with the councilman for the past six years. And I've gotten to know the couple who own the majority of the land where the project is being proposed, um that would be Teresa and Billy. I decided to speak on their behalf because they're not here. And Teresa has been just filled with anxiety and her nerves pretty raw, so they're not here today. But I want to share with you one of the things that Teresa did say to me, because she wanted me to help her compose something to read to you because she thought it would be difficult to talk to you. And the thing that she said that struck me the most was, I have lived here my entire life. I raised my children here. My children went to school in this area. I have been a land, a good landlord to many people in this neighborhood on Elvira who have rented from me, some who are still here. She said, now I'm ready to retire. She said, I don't understand how I could have been here my entire life and now that I want to retire. People who have just arrived in this community, who have barely been here, who don't know the neighbors that I've been a good neighbor to, now are making the decision, now have the loudest voices as to whether or not I, me and my husband can retire the way we would like to, that we can do what we want to do with our property to enjoy the rest of our retirement. So that's the thing that really struck me and I thought that I would share that with you because she was too anxious to come and do it herself.
Can you give us your address?
I live at eighteen thirteen Pearl Street in North Nashville.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here speaking in favor of the project? Please come on down and, and line up so we can.
Hello.
Hello.
How you doing?
Good.
Well, uh
Can we need your name and address?
I'm Corey Hope.
Okay.
And I no longer live in East Nashville. I've been displaced because of rising prices of
Can you give us your current address?
It's one twenty Oak Valley Road.
Okay.
Nashville, Tennessee. I grew up in East Nashville. I'm forty-seven years old. I remember when I was seven years old. I was living, they was in the housing projects on North Third Street. Shots ran out. My mother ran outside looking for my sister and I. She got hit. I remember when she came back from the hospital and I was like, hey, let's go, let's move, let's move out of East Nashville. She said, no, it's going to get better. Just stay, it's going to get better. Well, it's better now, much better than forty years ago, thirty years ago, twenty years ago. Five, the last five years, it's a different place. And also, I look at, I'm ready to go buy a house and I can't afford a house in East Nashville. I was thinking about moving to Clarksville. But somebody say, hey, they're building some affordable houses. Affordable houses in East Nashville? Wow, dream come true. So that's why I'm here. I'm here because I'm not from Clarksville. I'm not from Mount Juliet. I'm from East Nashville. I love East Nashville. I see the changes. I even work in East Nashville. So I'm here for the zoning. I know that starting a project like this, everything, this kind of, people's like, well, it might not work. This might not work, but to advance, you can't believe in, in what won't work. You got to work it out. So hopefully, we can work things out and make this project. So people like me that have been displaced can come back and live in East Nashville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Thomas Fowler. I live at one thousand seven Thomas Avenue with my brother. I've uh, my brother's lived on Thomas Avenue for probably about twenty years. He moved there in the late nineties. And, you know, I've seen a lot of improvements in the area. I've lived there a couple of years with him. I had to uh move in with him due to rising rent costs in East Nashville. I was formerly residing at uh Petway Avenue, ten twenty-five B Petway Avenue. And due to the owner of the place uh selling it and uh rising rent cost, I haven't really been able to, you know, find another place, so I stayed with my brother. I'm going to touch on kind of some of the stuff that uh Jackie was talking about. I think that a lot of the people that have not lived in the neighborhood or don't know anything about the neighborhood have been the ones and the voices that have been speaking on the project. And a lot of the people that actually live in the neighborhood have not got to say enough or really haven't had a lot of voice on the benefits of this. I'm all for affordable housing, anything that will give the people that don't make, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, the opportunity to live in a great district, I think the greatest district in Nashville, myself personally. I love it here and I'm, I want to be a first time home buyer. I'm thirty-seven years old tomorrow and I've never owned a home. I don't want to change where I live at. I love where I live. I love my neighborhood. I don't want to have the opportunity to buy a home, but I have four children and I don't have the capability to pay three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a tall, skinny dwelling. I need something that's affordable for myself and hopefully eventually, you know, when I get custody of my children, a place for them too. And it's, it's opportunity for the common man, is the way I look at it, to be able to reside in a great district and not have to go to Clarksville or go to Mount Juliet or go in. And I think Nashville as a whole has an affordable housing problem. But, you know, if it causes a little extra
To finish your sentence.
If it causes a little extra traffic, so be it. If it gets honest, hardworking people the opportunity to be able to uh live in the district and have that opportunity, so be it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else speaking in support? Anybody speaking in opposition to this bill? And yeah, if you can line up behind the sign here so that we can.
Hi, everybody. Uh my name's Whitney Pastorek. I live on Spain Avenue, nine one seven A Spain Avenue. And I'm representing the Executive Committee of the East Hill Neighborhood Association, which stretches on the west side of Gallatin from Carolyn Avenue up to Elvira. This proposed development is happening in the farthest, deepest corner of our neighborhood and we are strongly opposed to it for all of the reasons that you've already come up with yourselves in your existing recommendation for disapproval. We want to make it super clear that we all deeply respect and admire Scott Davis for his advocacy on the subject of affordable housing. However, this is not the appropriate place for this sort of development that's being proposed, nor is the actual development that's being proposed being represented properly in the conversations about affordable housing that are taking place today. A six hundred square foot, one bedroom apartment for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is neither affordable nor is it a place for someone with a family to live. These apartments are going to be designed for investors to become rental units. I'm sure you've all heard enough about the Airbnb issue this week. We have some real concerns on that front as well. While the utopian view of this becoming a place where people who are in the neighborhood who have been priced out can return to live their lives, I'm afraid it simply isn't true. And that's from my deep, long conversations with the developer, uh as well as Roy Dale, who I see is here today, and Scott and Jackie Sims as well. So again, respectfully, we appreciate the effort that they're trying to put into this. But given the infrastructure, given the existing character of the neighborhood, given the fact that we have no sidewalks, that our streets already are too narrow to get an ambulance or a school bus down if people are parked on them, given the fact that there's an eight inch sewer pipe going to this piece of land, all of the things that you guys listed in your initial disapproval, we respectfully hope that you will continue to disapprove this package and we're going to fight it all the way. Fifty-two houses is plenty to put on this piece of land. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Casey Hannah. I'm currently at six oh seven Derby Trace, but was at nine twenty-nine Elvira for two years. Recently moved out this summer, planning to move back. I lived at nine twenty-nine for two years and ended up going through a divorce, couldn't afford the mortgage on my own anymore. And my dad's a contractor, so I moved out, transferred the property to him and we are building, in the process of building two units on my property. Will sell one and move back, so that is, has been the master plan in my life to make it affordable for me to remain where I was. And just concerned about this development proposal affecting the value of what we're already in progress building. And also, the traffic, as has been mentioned, once we move, once I move back in, I'm at the middle of the street in the rise where you can't really see either direction and you have to pray when you pull out of the driveway. And to just add more traffic to that makes me even more anxious about the traffic issue, particularly at that spot in the driveway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shan Canfield and I live on Spain Avenue in East Hill and I've lived there for thirty-seven years. So I'm an old time resident and I am opposed to this. While I uh thank Scott Davis and all of you for trying to find locations for affordable housing, this is not the right spot. I told Mr. Davis at our last meeting, I heard that Charlie Bobbs has sold on Dickerson Road, that's over five acres. That would be a much more appropriate place for affordable housing, instead of going right in the middle of the neighborhood. So everything that planning recommended was spot on and I am against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Randall Dufren. I actually live at ten twenty-nine Manor Avenue. I'm actually on District Eight. So when you're looking at the map on the top side of it, there is a small little pointy piece that is Manor Avenue. Currently, on about those twelve lots, that one particular lot, my understanding in this development that they actually want to bridge Keeling and Elvira Street over to Manor Avenue. Manor Avenue is currently a dead end street. Right now, Manor Place, which is on the north side of this, uh has about a hundred houses total on about three streets plus an industrial development on the north side. So proposing to put approximately two hundred and nineteen units in the back of two developments does not seem like a, like a great idea. Very much opposed uh to this, to this type of development. I think the, the current zoning that's on there is, is plenty enough for this. I uh concur with the staff recommendations that this type of development is better suited for the more major thoroughfares like Gallatin Road and Trinity Lane. I don't really feel that it, it, it uh matches the neighborhood either in terms of the uh, the affordable housing. Definitely an advocate for affordable housing. Lived in Nashville for a long time. It's one of the things that I loved about Nashville is how affordable it was and to be able to sit in my neighborhood now that I'm completely priced out of, that I wouldn't be able to afford to live in. So I understand, but I don't think this is uh, don't think this is the venue for that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Corey Colton and my husband and I live at nine three five B Thomas Avenue. We are not longtime residents of the neighborhood. We are some of the newbies that live in the tall and skinnies. So we are not opposed to progress, obviously. We applaud the idea of the development. We think it's a wonderful thing. We think the affordable housing piece is great. We just do not think that this particular parcel is the right place to put it. Some of the reasons they gave us for this is to create density in the neighborhood in hopes that mass transit will come in and solve the transit issues. And I believe that creating a development of this density in that place for that reason is the wrong reason to do it. I think there are many more appropriate places to do it. I think that the, as my neighbors have said, the roads are too narrow. People have problems getting up and down the streets. The infrastructure won't support it. We are worried about the traffic that's coming out onto Trinity Lane. One of the things they said was that they could go out to Manor Lane, but most people are going downtown. And so we feel like it would quadruple or quintuple the traffic coming down Keeling, trying to get to Trinity. So uh we do not approve uh of this development being built here. And we also think that fifty-two units is plenty to put on this parcel of land, to stay within the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilman Davis, do you want to follow up?
I want to thank my East Hill neighbors who spoke in support and, and in opposition. There's a couple of things I want to clarify, please. I understand the need, you know, and I've gone through videos of our meetings and we've had three community meetings already and we've wrote down the concerns. That's why I wanted something in writing and something that's enforceable for the developers to do, not just one bedrooms at that affordable rate. I told them, if you're going to get more than a certain amount of units, I want the three bedrooms, the two bedrooms and some ones for some people that are aging out of the workforce at a affordable rate. Instead of a one bedroom, six hundred square feet at a hundred and thirty thousand, you're going to have to go below a hundred thousand. And that's the kind of thing. And I know uh with the help of Kerry Logan and the help of my council colleague over here, we've had, we have passed legislation to enforce this. And right now, you know, if they're not willing to meet the concerns of the neighborhood and give me some really good affordable housing legislation, basically, I want to be very honest, they got to give me something to hang my hat on. Because obviously, there's some neighbors I care a lot about who don't like this. And the only way that this can get done is that you do, really do what you say you're going to do and do some affordability on this. You know, add the improvements, add the sidewalks. But one thing I want to clear up, the MTA has helped me because of the development is twenty, is less than a quarter of a mile. It's actually, it's, 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 it is, it is six hundred feet from Trinity Lane, which there's a bus stop. Trinity Lane is a transit corridor and a collector's street. You know, so it does qualify for being on transit. But after the widening of Keeling and doing those improvements, the developer is not going to get the two hundred units. Thank you for your time. Thank you to my neighbors for coming. Thank you, planning staff and commissioners.
Thank you.
Sure, lady. I'd like to call the councilman here. I'd like to ask him a question. We've heard six hundred square feet a while ago. You mentioned, I believe it was about twelve hundred square feet. So there is a mixture. It's not all six hundred.
Yes, there is a, there is a mixture. Um my neighbors have pointed that out to me. I thank them for pointing that out. And as you may know through some of your friends, that, you know, I'm a stickler for putting that affordability in that legislation. And I'm like, you're not going to give me a five hundred square foot unit for two hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. No. You know, I mean, I need something where someone can raise some kids in, you know, someone that can teach school and that can afford to live here in this nice neighborhood. And that's what I'm, that's what, that's what the goal is. I mean, the gentleman, the gentleman who lives with his brother on Thomas that lives right there is one of the main people, like, I can't afford one of these four hundred thousand dollar, three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar tall and skinnies, you know? And that's part of the, you know, that he's a, he's a renter, you know, with his four children, that he doesn't have custody of because he doesn't have a house for them, so they have to stay with his mother because she has a house. And that's just, and that's normal life in Nashville right now. And I know we're all working hard and even the neighbors who may not like this development, they're for affordable housing. My neighbors love this. That's why it's East Nashville. We are for this. But they pointed out the property on Trinity at Bristol, this spot, Bristol is not going to be doing affordability. And also, what they're doing is they're helping to give another two acres to Open Table so they could build their tiny homes for the homeless on Dickerson Road. So I do follow the suggestions. Roy Dale is working on that for free. Yes, Roy Dale does do pro bono work and helps people that are needing help, not just rich, big developers and regular people like um Bill and Teresa. So pat them on the back next time you see them. And it's difficult. And I know you're going to disapprove. It's okay. You all are the best commission staff that we've seen in a long time.
Okay.
You know, and let's just, I mean, but you're not, you know what? We're gonna have to break some policy eggs here if we're really serious about holding these folks accountable and getting some sort of affordability that we don't get sued over and that we can enforce.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. And can I just ask a clarifying question before we start? We're talking about a straight rezoning. We don't have a project at this point, right? That we're, so we know nothing about a proposed project.
We're just reviewing a straight zone change operation.
Thank you. Okay. I will start with Council Lady Allen.
Thank you, I'm, I'm ready for this one.
All right.
It's a straight rezoning, so that means this is not an SP, correct? Correct. Thank you. And so, I, I always applaud Councilmember Davis for his creative approaches to these things and his passion for creating affordable housing. And I know we're gonna get there eventually. And I, and I see lots of potential in this spot. I'm concerned that with the RM forty zoning, there's no guarantee of any kinda price point. Is that, is that correct?
Correct, that would not be included in the application.
In this, okay. So then my question is, it looks to me like it's zoned R-six. Would detached accessory dwelling units be possible here? I know there's, there's some issues with not having alleys, so I don't know if that's a possibility, but is it?
It would be possible if they met the other criteria of the detached accessory dwelling units.
Just if lot sizes are bigger, for example, or something. And then it's mentioned that we could get fifty-two, a total of fifty-two units here. Right now, they're about ten. So there's a potential for forty-two more units that, that potentially could be affordable under certain circumstances. Is that correct?
We do that calculation based on the amount of square feet that's in the total application, and that's what we came up with.
Okay, that's based on square feet. So that might require some rezoning or reshifting of lot lines as well?
It was done within the existing zoning of R-six. And that's the amount of lots that we came up with.
Okay, total square footage, not necessarily how the lots are configured. Right, okay, so I got more. If, if, if maybe perhaps with some work with planning and, you know, a good understanding of what the goals are here, could an SP perhaps be created or a cottage development type of zoning be created that might create the circumstances for what, what's envisioned here?
We would be happy to look at a plan if it was submitted into us to review.
Gotcha.
And if I'm not mistaken, isn't that what we suggested to the councilman?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, I think. And then, you know, then it could be either reconfigured to get that fifty-two on there in, in some three-family, as well as some one-family houses, perhaps, or something like that. And then, I guess the other question is, it, there's been reference to a single owner who owns four lots, but there seem to be like a dozen here. Do we know if, I mean, so are we dealing with eight different owners at this point? And we don't know?
Yes, I have all the owner application information in the file. So there are multiple owners.
Multiple owners. So, I mean, we, this again is a conceptual rezoning with the hope that then everybody would sell to a single developer who would then do something. But that's not there at this point, is that correct?
Once rezoned, they could develop individually.
Individually, okay. With multi-family up to whatever the RM forty. But in terms of sidewalks getting built or things like that, that doesn't necessarily happen. Does that happen as part of RM forty A?
As a part of RM forty A, it would happen.
It does require sidewalks.
It would, it would be required for glazing as well and different other standards.
Though they may be eligible to pay the in-luffy with RM forty A.
Okay. So that, that does include a sidewalk. Okay, that's, that's good to know. But that would be piece by piece, lot by lot in, in, in the current configuration. I think the goals are great. I think, you know, concerns about two-hundred and thirty-three are legitimate, given the size of the, of the streets. And I would encourage the creative council member maybe to have one more round at it. I mean, heck, you've done four, what's one more? To maybe see if there's a, an, a more specific way to achieve what he's looking at. Because I'm, I'm concerned that the RM forty doesn't, doesn't give him the ability to actually be sure that what he wants to happen will, will happen. I mean, it's based on promises. So I think I would, I would encourage another look at this. I'm not sure what that motion would be, but I'll listen to the other discussions.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. I kept hearing twelve affordable housing units is, where did you get that number from? I just wanted to understand where, if, can I ask that a question? Or if anybody knows?
There's, there's nothing, if you did a straight rezoning, there's, there's nothing that would guarantee you any number of units.
I was just wondering, 'cause I kept hearing, you know, twelve affordable units would be great here. But I think as many, more than twelve affordable units would be better here. So, and I think if we just do a straight rezoning, we won't, we're not guaranteed any affordable units. Especially because each individual homeowner will, can legally do what they wanna do there. And I think if we really wanna do this right, it's best to see a plan, and it's best to get that guaranteed. So I agree with a lot of what Council Lady has said. I think, you know, we can try again, and I think we can get there.
Commissioner Blackshear?
I agree with everything the prior commissioners have stated. There's really not that much more to add. One point that I did wanna add was the consistency with the policy. Staff has stated that they don't find it consistent with the policy. I agree with their analysis. I don't think there's been anything stated by the supporters that would make the, or that would support the argument that this rezoning would be consistent with the policy. Actually, found the supporters' arguments very compelling for affordable housing, but for all the reasons that the prior commissioners stated. I mean, affordable housing's not guaranteed with this rezoning. And because the rezoning is inconsistent with the policy as a commission, if we agree that it's inconsistent, our hands are tied, to steal the language from one of the supporters, about our ability to approve this. So for all of the reasons that the prior commissioners have stated, and the fact that I agree that the rezoning would be inconsistent with the policy, I could not be in support of this as it's presently presented.
Commissioner Clifton?
Well, people have said it very well already, and it is a, we try many ways to get affordable housing, and everyone wants to have it, except maybe our General Assembly, I don't know. But we'll see about that. The, the creativity is, is admirable. It's a big idea. It, it, there is no way I know of to, as has been said, this is not really an affordable housing proposal because it can't be enforced under our law. That's why we had to have a different kinda law, of course, which I applaud the council for passing. I also wanna point out, I, I don't wanna point it out, I wanna ask the staff. There seems to be a dispute about how likely it is that if this were built, that it would be a, a great issue for transit, that it would be easy for transit. Would you kinda walk us through that again? We're looking on this map. Where, where is transit now and likely to be in the future? How, is all of this close to transit? Or on transit, or what?
Right now, you can see the corridor of Gallatin Pike to the east and Trinity Lane to the south. Currently, there are transit options on those corridors right now. And that's where they would be put, if anything, in the future.
How far away is that? How block, how many blocks?
Maybe roughly three thousand feet.
From the closest area, then further?
Well, without knowing exactly where the transit stops, we located on Gallatin Pike, it'd be hard to say. But, I mean, it is a walkable distance to, to Gallatin Road. I mean, we're looking at, when, when we look at where we think the distance is that people will walk to transit, I think this is well within that spectrum.
I understood the, the staff report to mention that as being the wrong place if you wanted it for transit, so I guess I.
Yeah, well, we would say when you have single-family neighborhoods like this, when they're well-established, that you want your multi-family, if you can, closer to the corridor, where the transit is. And this is further back in an established, single-family neighborhood away from it. So that you end up having to drive all the way through the single-family area to get to it. So I think that's really the issue.
Okay, not that they can't walk it, it's just the right, wrong place to put it.
I mean, it's also a timing issue. I mean, this is an evolving area, but what we are saying is that it'd be more appropriate for the, any higher-density development to occur along the corridors and then maybe work its way back into this so that the infrastructure could be timed in a way that it goes along with the development. It's unlikely with a straight rezoning that you're gonna have these, these local streets improved all the way back with this rezoning. So if we had a, if there was a more comprehensive plan that went along with this, I think we could consider something like that easier.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner McLean?
Well, I agree with the councilman that needs some affordable housing all areas of town. I know that it doesn't support the policy, that it's hard for this commission to take that, that step and possibly come back with a SP, maybe. I think of the concerns of what I'm hearing from the commissioners. If we approved the RM forty, that each individual homeowner then says, "I don't wanna sell in, in block." And then they could, somebody with a narrow strip could go back and do something that maybe doesn't, doesn't fit the neighborhood. Certainly in sympathy with, with the need for affordable housing and what Councilman Davis is trying to do in his district. But I guess at this time, that the SP may be the most appropriate. So I could, I think we could support that maybe if you come back with it.
Commissioner McGinnear?
Nothing really to add, except to say, we've shown as a commission that we are pro-affordable housing. So we don't really, what I would like to caution the greater community of is not to be throwing affordable housing around as a way to, to go around, or not to say that this was happening here, but just as a statement. If you put a, the affordable housing tag on things, doesn't mean that we're gonna be approving things that are not consistent with policies. And so we, we're gonna need to see something more than just an idea of some affordable housing that might happen if certain things happen, and that's not speaking to this project. It's just taking, making that statement now so that we don't have to have this conversation every two weeks on everything we do.
Good point.
I'd like to add this too, for, for the councilman. We heard some people say, you know, there's no sidewalks, the streets are too narrow. But understood that both Elvira and maybe Manor was gonna be widened and sidewalks, if that's, you know, if it's possible to get that right away from the homeowners. So that's another issue that, that is a positive, that we're being heard as a negative, that there's no sidewalks and there's traffic. But for the SP to be effective, I think those, that has to be pointed out. And to come back with a plan that does show that specific, that those, those items will be in before there's a UNO, so.
Does anybody want to make a motion, or?
I'd make a motion to defer, if it's appropriate. They'll go back and work on it.
Yeah, I think this is one where the bill's already been filed. And so, do we have time for a deferral?
It is scheduled for the October public hearing. And so without a recommendation, the councilman would need to suspend the rules to have the public hearing.
But within our timeframe, we have to have a recommendation back to the council. What, what is our deadline for that?
It was filed in September, and so thirty-day, it won't have been considered an approved bill. So if it's disapproved, he'd be able to go forward with public hearing. If it's deferred, there would need to be a suspension of the council rules to have the public hearing.
Let me, let me ask this, the councilman. Is there a developer that can step up and do the engineering when you come back en masse? Or is this just?
This is the thing. There is a developer. There is a SP preliminary that was submitted by Roydale. Unfortunately, with all the community meetings and trying to get all the input from the neighbors, they put it together, and there's some more stuff I wanted to add it. Add, the goal was, you know, still is, which I've done it before, is, you know, bring it forward, you know, present the SP during second reading, defer on second, like I've done before, and bring it back to the planning commission like, "Aha, here's everything that we wanted." And then getting in all the input. You know, right now, you know, if the, if the committee wants to, I'm sorry, if the commissioners want to defer this, I will honor your wishes, and we will bring this back. But we need to be on track for the November fourth or November tenth public hearing, if that's possible.
The only thing that I would say, and I don't have the caption of the bill here in front of me, is that if what we're talking about is changing to an SP, then that's a completely separate bill, and the process would have to start all over again. We couldn't convert this to an SP.
Couldn't convert to a regulatory SP?
No.
I think, I, it depends on what the SP includes sometimes. I mean, if council has allowed zone changes to be amended on third reading, but without seeing the SP, allowed zone changes to be amended on third reading, but without seeing the SP, it's hard to say for sure whether that's going to be permitted or not.
I guess if it were still within the limits of the RM40.
Right.
Then yeah, you could.
Okay, anybody?
Could I ask a question relative to that motion?
We haven't made a motion yet.
I thought there was a motion that was waiting for a potential second.
It was, it was never seconded.
Okay, well, somebody may want to, but I, I wanted to ask this question. To get by the rules to, to, to move forward, I mean, I don't want us to get in the position of having been deemed to approve it, of course. You know what I'm about to ask? I mean, is it really dependent on, on suspending the rules which requires unanimous consent or is that a little bit different now?
It's a little bit different now. They have to have, there has to be two objections. Yeah.
Two objections can knock it off.
Yeah, if you ask for a suspension, if there are two people who object to suspension of the rules, then it doesn't.
Right.
Prevents it from moving forward.
Let me, while you're thinking, Stuart, let me ask this question. If, say we defer it to come back, does this still meet the policies? Are they going to require a policy change?
Until we see the SP and we understand what the plan is, I can't, I can't really say whether it meets policy or not. And that's really why we really encouraged this to be deferred initially so that we can hammer all this out and then bring it in front of you. So we wouldn't spend all the time looking at a project that the councilman, as he stated now a number of times in this meeting, knows is going to be probably disapproved, that it was going to get a disapproval from the, from the department. And so that's why we desperately asked that it not move forward and that it be deferred and so that we can hammer these things out and then bring it to you in hopefully a form that, that we felt that the commission could accept and that we could endorse.
I'm, I'm not really thinking that a, a second would be a good idea because I think it would set a precedent for a way to very often just run around the rules. And this is not close enough to reality or possibility that we need to be suspending, that we need to be trying to find ways to keep it going. So I think maybe something new could be filed in the future if, if things get pulled together.
Would you like to make a motion?
A move we, well.
Well, so do we first need to deal with the motion that's in front of us? So we don't have a second, so then?
I don't think, I think he was just talking about it. I don't think you actually made a, did you make a motion?
I made a motion, but there wasn't a second, so that.
Okay.
To say that. Right.
I need to withdraw it, I can't.
Well, well, I think if, since there's, there's, yeah, there hasn't been a second. So Chair, if you say that it's failed for lack of a second, then we can move to the next one.
It's failed for lack of a second. So do we have anyone interested in making another motion? Different motion?
A move we disapprove pursuant to the staff recommendation.
I will second. Anyone else? Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, number, we're on to number thirteen.
You ready? All right. All right, good afternoon. This item thirteen A is request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan at MDHA's existing Casey Homes.
Can I ask one quick point of clarification? We're doing thirteen A, B, and C together. Is that correct? But several people or?
Right, I'll be presenting on the plan amendment. And Lisa is going to be presenting on the PUD and SP.
Great, sorry, didn't intend to interrupt.
So yes, this was to amend the East Nashville Community Plan at Casey Homes and it's associated with the, the PUD and SP. And Lisa's going to present. The plan amendment is requested in order to implement the envisioned Casey master plan by changing from urban neighborhood evolving, urban neighborhood center and open space to urban, urban mixed use neighborhood, open space and civic with the dash line shown here as the boundary of the plan amendment area. And I'll walk you through each of those specific amendments in a few slides. Metro Council Action in 2015 established the Casey redevelopment district that's shown here with the blue outline along with the plan area and the dashed outline. For this application for plan amendment, the staff is recommending approval with an expanded boundary for the community plan area that I'll discuss in a couple of seconds too. Shown here is the envisioned Casey master plan. MDHA had developed the master plan with a multi-year planning effort process that involved a wide range of stakeholders. The master plan provides for the redevelopment of Casey Homes into a vibrant mixed income, mixed use, walkable community. Planning Commission approved a community plan amendment in July that allowed for the initial phase of this multi-year redevelopment process as shown here at the top edge. It changed open space policy at Kirkpatrick Park to urban neighborhood evolving. And this was done with the intention of replacing that open space with a large linear park that's also shown here. That's the signature park of the proposal. Okay, the applicant requested to expand the proposed community amendment area boundary that's shown here in yellow at the, in this area. It's located between Seventh Street and Eighth Street, and this occurred after public notice. It would allow mixed use to front the proposed linear park as described in the master plan. And including this expanded boundary with applicant's request before you today requires that we ask you to suspend your public notification rules. Staff does not have a concern with this request to suspend the rules due to two key, two key reasons. First, the expanded boundary was discussed at the community meeting held on August eighteenth. Participants at that meeting did not object to that change or to the community plan amendment. And then second, the envisioned Casey plan was developed with extensive public participation and has been widely circulated and discussed as part of MDHA's ongoing three-year effort to engage and inform residents in surrounding neighborhoods. So this shows the multiple policy changes that are involved in this request, and I'll walk you through each one individually. The largest request is to change from urban neighborhood evolving to urban mixed use neighborhood. And you can see those large areas in purple here. The next request shown is for the neighborhood center policy to change also to, to the urban mixed use neighborhood. And then this, this request is urban neighborhood evolving to open space, and this would allow for the linear park that is proposed. This request shown is from open space to civic, along with this request shown here also for the same. That, along with the previous slide, provides for various civic and institutional uses envisioned by the master plan. And this next slide shows you the areas within the redevelopment district that are not proposed for changes with this request. So you can see there are still several areas that will remain as they are. And again, this involves multiple policy changes. And the staff recommendation is to approve with suspension of public notice rules to incorporate the expanded boundary.
Good evening. I'll be presenting items thirteen B and thirteen C. This is a request to permit a mixed use development through a rezoning to a specific plan and also to cancel a portion of an existing planned unit development, I'm sorry, planned, planned unit development overlay. Staff recommendation is to approve the SP with conditions and disapprove without all conditions if the associated policy amendment is approved and to disapprove if the associated policy amendment is not approved. Staff also recommends approval of the PUD cancellation if the associated SP is approved and disapproval if the associated SP is not approved. There are several existing zoning districts covering the property. The, currently the property is ZONE CS Commercial Neighborhood and RM twenty Residential Multifamily, twenty units per acre. There is also an existing PUD overlay covering the property. Now, the PUD that covers the property is part of a REZ E PUD. These were PUDs that were established in the early nineteen seventies as recognition of existing public housing complexes prior to comprehensive zoning being incorporated. There is no master PUD plan associated with those adopted REZ E PUDs. They are simply an acknowledgement of the existing land use. So this is the proposed SP, and this is proposed as a mixed use development. It proposes a maximum of twenty-three-hundred-and-ninety residential multifamily units. It proposes a maximum of two-hundred-and-eight-thousand square feet of retail uses, a maximum of two-hundred-thousand square feet of office uses. There is a allowance for up to fifty-thousand square foot grocery store and a three-hundred-key hotel. So those would be limited. They couldn't have multiple groceries or hotels. The plan as proposed for the SP is divided into multiple sub-districts. Those sub-districts include the Neighborhood Center Subdistrict, which is located here on the edge of the development. This is adjacent to the existing interstate and provides for the most intense uses and heights. The Neighborhood Core is located here and here, and those uses are for the, primarily for residential uses with some limited instances of commercial located at key locations. The next would be, the next sub-district is the Neighborhood Edge, located here and here. These, this sub-district provides for a transition from the multifamily that's proposed into the existing single-family residential. So those permit a lesser height and less intensity as you move into those existing established neighborhoods. And the final sub-district is the Civic and Institutional Subdistrict, which is located here and here. This provides for the centralized linear park that is the key feature of the development that runs through the middle. It also provides for an area for civic and institutional uses, a variety of uses permitted there. As I spoke about previously, within the Neighborhood Core, there are several key locations that allow for small commercial retail uses. That allows for a corner market or neighborhood level commercial that future residents and existing residents could walk to, to provide for convenient services. Those are indicated on the maps. They are shown for you by the stars where they would be located. The way that this SP is written is it is, it provides for the uses that are allowed within the sub-districts. It provides for fallback zonings within the sub-districts. It provides for heights and some other limitations within the sub-districts. Now, this entire project is within a redevelopment district. As such, there are design guidelines that are adopted by MDHA for the redevelopment district. Those design guidelines will cover the majority of the design details. So anytime that a plan comes forward, it would have to go through the MDHA Design Review Committee, which the planning department also has a representation on. The SP ensures that there's properties, proper zoning in place and provides the flex, flexibility to implement those design guidelines. This SP is tracking for the December sixth council public hearing, and the Design Review Committee of MDHA will be adopting those design guidelines. There's a plan to consider and adopt those design guidelines on October eleventh. So they would be in place well before the zoning was put into place or became official or effective for this SP. The existing policies, as Marty discussed, and I won't linger on this for very long, there are several existing policies within the area, including T five Center Mixed Use Neighborhood, T four Urban Neighborhood Center, and T four Urban Neighborhood Evolving, along with some civic and open space. The proposed policies include T five Center Mixed Use Neighborhood, Urban Mixed Use Neighborhood, Urban Neighborhood Evolving, Civic and Open Space. Marty explained in his presentation where those are going in the development. Now, in regards to the SP, for the most part, the SP is consistent with the existing policies. The existing policy for the majority of the property is Neighborhood Evolving, which allows for multifamily. However, that is a residential-only policy. So the request is consistent with the proposed policies which allow for those mixture of uses and also incorporates the linear park through the center of the development. This plan supports several critical planning goals. It provides for end-field development in an urban location with existing infrastructure. It also creates walkable neighborhoods in that sidewalks and pedestrian facilities would be provided. Open space is being created through the linear park that's proposed through the central part of the development. It provides a range of housing choices, both internal and within the larger area. It supports a variety of transportation choices in that residents would be able to walk to and utilize existing transit services. And also the Casey, the envisioned Casey master plan project has encouraged community participation by having an ongoing communication and conversation with the neighborhood. In conclusion, given that this project meets several critical planning goals and is consistent with the proposed policies that are being suggested for approval by, with the plan amendment, staff recommends approval of the SP with conditions and disapproval with, without all conditions if the associated policy amendment is approved. Staff also recommends approval of the PUD cancellation if the associated SP is approved and disapproval if the associated SP is not approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant will have ten minutes.
Council, uh, members, vice chair and planning commission members, thank you very much for what you do here every week, or every month, however often you have to meet, I don't know. But I know the last one I was, it was pretty late and so nobody got upset about it. They just went on and did their thing. So thank you very much. My name is Ralph Mosley. I am a resident of Nashville, thirty-eight, thirty, Whitland Avenue. I am the chair of the Board of Commissioners of Metropolitan Development Housing Agency. And we are here today asking your approval of the Casey, envisioned Casey project that has been going on for over three years now. It has been widely publicized. We've had over thirty-seven public meetings. The good news is that it's twenty-three-hundred mixed use and mixed income housing. And that will also replace the seven-hundred-and-thirty-some that are here now and plus CWA was about another two-hundred some. So about nine-hundred low-income housing units will be back and those people will have an opportunity to come back. We will, we will build other mixed income housing. The good news is, and so that you know, I heard some question about who says you're doing a good job. MDHA is proud tomorrow to receive in Knoxville a, an award as the best mixed income housing project in the state of Tennessee. And we are also in running and feel good about our chances with a project with HUD and Choice Neighborhood and the opportunity to receive thirty million dollars to help make this project a reality. So we are here today to ask your approval and to thank you for your willingness to come today and to hear what our plans are. And I appreciate very much your time and your consideration and approval.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Zach Dufour. I'm a civil engineer with Kimley Horn. I've, uh, was a resident in Shelby Hills for over seven years. So this project is near and dear to my heart. And I've been working with MDHA on this project for just about twelve months now. As you all know, this project originated in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, when the envisioned Casey process was started. There was, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. I know you, you all have heard that before. But just a couple of key goals out of this document of envisioned Casey, deconcentrate poverty, mixed income, no displacement, replace affordable units one-to-one, maintain and expand support services, and improve amenities. Those amenities being transportation, walkability, safety, open space, all the things that Lisa mentioned previously. Public engagement also was mentioned. Mr. Mosley mentioned thirty-eight, my count, or thirty-seven, my count was thirty-eight, public meetings. Those ranged from community advisory groups, resident meetings, and general public meetings over the last three years. Just this year alone, as this process has started to unfold even, even larger, we've had eighteen of those meetings, and those still are ongoing today. The conclusion to envisioned Casey, in the back of the book here, there was a next steps page. From two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen, there's a list of twenty goals that needed to be achieved to really get this process started. Out of those twenty, really two aren't applicable anymore. They're not required by HUD. So out of eighteen, twelve are complete and the other six are ongoing. Number fourteen on the list states initiate rezonings and parentheses, specific plan process SP. So that's why we're here today, obviously. We've got an SP in front of you and we're still on our way to creating that envisioned process. The KC SP that you've got before you, as Lisa mentioned, sets out a few key goals. Land use, location, per sub-district allowable uses, for example, density and intensity, twenty-three-hundred-and-ninety units, as was discussed, mixed income standards. That's actually written into this book as regulation. At least fifty percent market and workforce housing is a requirement, and it's not just a requirement overall. It's actually been committed to the first five hundred units and every five hundred units thereafter. There are height maximums in here. There are street sections. There's fallback zoning. And we really tried to hit on all the important pieces that we heard from the community. So we went into some fairly strict guidelines on tree save and tree density because we know that's important and there's a lot of very mature trees out there. We did hear some feedback from the community. One of the changes that we made was the Neighborhood Edge that abuts the rear of the properties that face Shelby. Those neighbors really wanted a more, more of a transition zone. So that section there that you see on, in the purple at the north end on, on your map, was changed to Neighborhood Edge to make those lower, more transitional developments that would be, be limited to two stories immediately adjacent to those existing homes. Other design standards, as mentioned, are going to be in the design guidelines, and we'll hear about that in just a second. But really, this SP has got a few key features. But the main goal is to carry forward envisioned Casey in, from a master plan into a regulating document. We feel like we've done that. We've presented that to the public. We've asked at our community meetings, if anyone didn't feel like that happened in this, in this transfer from a master plan to an SP, to please let us know. And we didn't receive any negative comments about that. So that was truly in the, the intent, and that's what we feel like we've done.
Sorry, sorry, we didn't get your address.
Uh, my name is Zach Dufour, thirteen oh seven Choctaw Trail.
Great.
Hi, Hunter G. Smith G. Studio, seven thirteen Benson Street in East Nashville. As many of you know, our firm created the plan, the original plan for envisioned Casey. MDHA has also hired us to design the first phase, which is not part of this. We were before you two, two months ago. Just got approved on third reading for Kirkpatrick Park just adjacent to this. MDHA also asked us to do a couple of more things. One, write the design guidelines that, and I just want to make a clear. One, write the design guidelines, that, and I just want to make a clarification, that the board at MDHA will be approving those design guidelines in October, not the Design Review Committee. And also to work with Zach and his team to make sure that the integrity of the process that we went through in 2012 and 13 was maintained, and that the intent of the plan was maintained. And I can stand before you today and ensure you that that is the case. Finally, I wanted to again mention what Mr. Mosley mentioned. Tomorrow morning, Joe Kane and I are driving to Knoxville to receive very proudly the award for the Most Outstanding Plan of the Year for Large Jurisdictions for Envision Casey.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for your service. I'm Jim Harbison. I'm the Executive Director of MDHA, 213 Woodford, but most of my time is on 701 South 6th Street, right in the middle of Casey. This is workforce housing, this is affordable housing, this is mixed-income development to deconcentrate poverty in the heart of our community for our residents, who are 88% African-American female head of household, three kids, and struggle, and they're good people. Please support this. We've worked very hard to reach out to the community, we have a means to finance it, it's going to take us eight years, but it's the right thing to do. This project and this location is tired. My grandfather was a carpenter on this job in 1937. It needs to be replaced. We're doing the best to maintain those properties as we can, but this site needs to be replaced. Last, HUD requires us, as we do our rental assistance demonstration, which I briefed you on, and I'm happy to come back and update you on, we are required to improve the life of our residents. So for the 963 families there, they're going to get new homes. For 70 more families of very low income, we will add more, 80% and below AMI, and we're putting 353 workforce housing on the, the rest are all marketplace. So Unit A will be very low income, Unit B moderate, Unit C will be some of market rate. Please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I did just want to mention that we're in support of all the conditions outlined by staff.
Great, thank you.
Will you speak about?
Yeah, 56 seconds. Okay, do we have anyone here that's speaking in support? Let's see. No? Any, are you, are you coming? Oh.
I'll speak after.
Okay. If you can state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Vernell McHenry. I'm a Casey resident, a Casey resident, okay. I live there, I've been living there for 15 years. I've been going to all the meetings, I'm on the CAG with Casey. My thing is, we need new housing. We need an uplift. We live right in the heart of downtown, and I think, I'm waiting for my new place. And I think the, if you approve of it, I think we will all be happy, because it would be something new and something exciting, and I think the children would love having a new place to run and play. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Marsha Edwards. I'm the CEO at the Martha O'Brien Center at 711 South Center, South 7th Street. I'm also a member of the CAG, but tonight I rise to read a letter from our Vice President of our, of our Residents Association. Marilyn Greer could not be here tonight because she lost her daughter last week and is caring for the three teenagers that were left behind. But she had us a letter, and I'd like to read that to you. My name is Marilyn Greer, and I have lived in Casey Place for five years. I am also the Acting Vice President of the Residents Association. I feel I can speak for the majority of the residents here, that we are in favor of the new Envision Casey. For years, myself and others have dealt with a variety of problems in this old housing project. If we look around Nashville, there are homes going up everywhere, so we are going to help Nashville grow. Let's continue to beautify East Nashville. The residents here in Casey Place are highly anticipating housing, having a new home, a home where there is no mold, no old appliances, no old, a home where we can truly feel safe, a place where their kids can go out and play. So please pass this bill, so that we can not only say we have helped Nashville, but say that we have helped thousands of adults and children to have a better way of life and a clean environment. Marilyn Greer, 8th Avenue. In addition to Marilyn, I just want to say that I have been in Casey for 16 years, and I've had many conversations on stoops and on houses. I have been in many, many units. And while this plan, this booklet that everyone in Casey has seen, has produced a, has produced a result already, and that is hope. So please support this SP. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman?
Is there anyone in opposition?
Oh, you want to come up? Ah, okay. Okay. Anyone else here in support? Okay. Anybody here in opposition? Please state your name and address.
My name is Matt Schutz, and I live at 605 South 10th Street. I love and respect my Casey neighbors, and I don't want them going anywhere against their will. However, it is my opinion that as a conservation-minded architect, if we as a city and society continue to throw away viable structures and infrastructure, it will on the whole result in less affordable, less durable housing that contributes to injustice, not the least of which, is wasted embodied energy that contributes to global climate change. It has also been my experience that one of the best things we can do to provide affordable housing in the long term is to ensure that structurally viable buildings like the brick and concrete homes of Casey Neighborhood remain in use and out of landfills. I'm certainly not saying that the Casey Neighborhood couldn't use improvements, and my opinion has been needed upgrades for decades. For example, instead of having trash cans and recycle canisters that each individual resident, at each individual residence, dumpsters in Casey Neighborhood sit right at the street. Instead of having roads, vehicular, or pedestrian that connect to surrounding neighborhoods, streets like Sylvan are discontinued at key connection points. Rather than shielded by fencing, private areas behind residences are open to side streets. At the initial Envision Casey meeting years ago, I spoke out and asked the MDHA to consider main, maintaining the existing structures, rehabilitating homes unit by unit, and limiting new construction to available open land. In this case, willing residents could aid in rehabilitation and financing with local professionals, and compared to new construction, rehabilitation projects tend to devote a greater percentage of project cost to local skilled labor. The option put forth by MDHA is a well-intentioned and well-designed option. I'm a huge fan of the architect and landscape architect. However, I feel it relies too heavily on new construction, which may not be the best option. As a part of SP zoning process, you may have the ability to require or encourage the retention of existing structures. By trying to remove and reinvent the buildings and park space, rather than rehabilitate and reimagine the hard work done by previous generations, we may be missing the charge of a generation, primarily the goals of equality and conservation. In the late 1950s, Nashville Housing Authority began demolishing houses and large swaths of land for a process commonly referred to as urban renewal. City officials and residents were undoubtedly told at that time, don't worry, the new stuff will be better. For one who has a passion for history and preservation and conservation.
Can you finish your sentence?
One who is disheartened by unwarranted demolition is, and its effects upon global climate change, it seems, and all, and affordable housing, it seems an all-too-familiar and more mournful refrain in New Nashville. Thank you for your time, consideration, and service to the city.
Thank you. Anybody else here speaking in opposition?
I thought Jim was there.
I know. Would you, do you, are you speaking after the public hearing?
I was intending to speak after the public hearing.
Okay, then I'll give them their 56 seconds.
Thank you, Jim Harbison, Executive Director, MDHA, 213 Woodford, 701 South 6th Street. I don't think I can be any more simple or direct. I respectfully disagree with equality and the status of the existing structures. They are antiquated, they have structural failing problems, we have trouble with membrane roofs, we have trouble with tuck and pointing our bricks. We have extensive repairs that we maintain as best we can. We have a relatively good score in our HUD Real Estate Assessment Center, which comes in every three years to assess our property, but we never get very high on that score because of the obsolete nature, both of the architecture and of the buildings themselves. Additionally, the tenants and the residents, near universally, I've had not one single resident not say, Mr. Harbison, when is our turn? When do we get our new structures? We can do this better, and what we have now is inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Withers?
Thank you so much, Commissioners. My name is Brett Withers, Metro Council District 6, and my home address is 1113 Granada Avenue. And just want to thank everyone who took the time to come out and speak today. Also want to thank some of our planning staff who have worked really closely. I know with me, I'm sure before I was elected, a lot of work went into that, but I really appreciate, as we're in particular looking at the community plan change, I really appreciate the feedback that we've had from the planning staff. I think Lisa Milligan did a great job of explaining how some of these complex parts all work together. I promise everyone that once that community plan change is all amended, it looks like a bunch of disparate parts right now, but it will make more sense on the whole, and that'll, that will be a good thing. This is a plan that has been in the works for several years. I find that there is a high degree of fidelity between what's presented here today and the master plan document that was published a couple of years ago that captured work that had been done up to that point. Like I said, there's a high degree of fidelity. There have been some changes, some of the commercial uses in the interior is a new change, but it's a change that has been vetted with the public, with the residents, with the neighbors, with neighborhood associations. And I've had a really strong degree of support from the neighbors for, in particular, for adding some limited mixed-use opportunities there in the, in the center of the new campus. In particular, I do want to mention, I appreciate Zach Dufour highlighting this, but for some of the Edge areas where Envision Casey, where this plan becomes adjacent to the existing homes, that transition is really, really important. And one thing that I really want to thank everyone for working with me on is, is that purple area at the top that is immediately behind Shelby Avenue. Of course, those homes along Shelby are within a historic preservation zoning district. Most of them are, in fact, contributing structures, so most of those will be there, and in fact, many of those are single-story structures. So, a lot of times Edgefield has a lot of variety in their historic housing stock in terms of height, but some of those houses there on Shelby are at the lower end of that scale anyway, and so I really appreciate everyone working to try to respect that, that transition and not have a single-story historic house with a really, really large structure immediately behind it. That, I think, brought some of my Shelby Avenue neighbors on board with this project, so that, that's a really good thing. I also wanted to point out that at our community meetings that we've had, one of the things that I have been really interested in is sort of bringing together some of the kind of community experts that we have in East Nashville. And so, for transportation and pedestrian issues, we have a lot of people in East Nashville who are much smarter about that than I am, and I really appreciate individuals from Walk Back Nashville for coming out and looking at some of this with us and providing their feedback on some of those details about streets and where bike lanes should go, and what would make an environment work for cars, but also for pedestrians, especially since we're going to have a large number of children, and we want the children to be safe when they're, when they're out on the street, walking or biking. Overall, I think this plan, Mr. Schutz brings a lot of good points. I mean, I'm an advocate of historic preservation, I really appreciate his thoughtful insights into, into that aspect. Many of our East Nashville neighbors who started the Historic Preservation Zoning District in the 70s have participated in this plan, and even those individuals say that, you know, the plan that we're getting is much, but much better than preserving some of the buildings that may technically qualify, but they, even many of those neighbors have expressed that they feel that this is an improvement over what's there. Certainly, the MDHA building itself, which is historic and will be there, and we're working to preserve some of the historic trees, which a lot of my neighbors are really excited about. So, I appreciate any efforts at historic preservation, it's just that in this case, the benefits of new construction far outweigh that, that interest in this particular case. And another thing about that, too, is a lot of really, really intelligent people have looked at this plan, Mr. Schutz is definitely one of those. There is not an opportunity to add the number of housing units that we're talking about to create a mixed-income community. There just is not the land there to add that kind of housing. So, this unfortunately is necessary in order to create a mixed-income community without, without displacing anyone. So all in all, I really think that this community plan change in particular is, is, makes the original plan even better, it, particularly by creating the park that goes through with some adjacent mixed-use opportunities. I'm really excited about the fact that we could maybe start to have jobs that are right within the community that some of our residents could, could walk to. I think that's a really exciting opportunity. And also the fact that this would, for the first time, really bring community members from outside Casey into that community, they would have more of a reason and a destination to come there. And so that will, will go a long way towards tying together an area of East Nashville that has been separated for a really long time. So, again, for the, for the displacement piece, just in terms of, you know, preserving the existing buildings would be expensive, could be worthwhile for some specific buildings, but on the whole, the only way we're going to get the housing that we need, not only to provide new housing to our residents who deserve new housing, frankly, but to bring in some additional neighbors is, is to pursue a plan such as this one. I spoke, I belong to a church in the Five Points area, and we serve meals to the homeless and the hungry twice a week. And this past Saturday, when we were serving a meal, I had a young man who's a Casey resident and a Stratford High School student who stopped in, and I was able to speak with him, and he's apprehensive about moving. I think as, as young people would be, or any family would be, it's exciting to get a new home. But I just want to think, you know, if we're talking about renovation, first of all, we'd have to find a place for the residents to go to during the renovation. Then you're talking about having these families move at least twice. Let's, let's create the mixed-income housing as we build, so that people only have to move one time. I think that's the most humane thing we can do for these families, and this plan achieves that. So for all those reasons, I do ask your support and appreciate your thoughts on this, and look forward to any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Do you want to make a comment about?
Yes, I just wanted, just for the record, I mean, I think we're okay, but for the record, I would prefer if the Commission would just go ahead and vote on the rule suspension regarding the notices, and I think we've laid out in our staff recommendation why we think that's okay, and I think that also that the applicants laid that out as well.
Want to get a motion to?
Separate motion from Benson. A move we, we consent to the rule suspension as discussed earlier.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I just want to take another moment to really thank MDHA and all of their, the group that's helped them along the way. We met, like I said, three years ago, I think, when they first started working on this, and they have kept the, the planning department apprised of their progress all along the way. They brought us in to talk about, you know, design of the buildings, the different uses, the location, how they face the park, the located, the building locations, the, the uses, all of that, we were consulted with all along the way, and we just really appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with, with the whole group all along the way. And it's, it's becoming more the norm that the departments and the different agencies are working together, but I think that this was a great opportunity for us to be able to work with MDHA, so thanks.
Great. Great. Okay, I'm going to start this direction. Commissioner Hagendier?
I, I guess, wait, one point of clarification, we are, we're discussing all three items, we'll take votes separately at the end, so. Well, I actually have no questions. I'm on board with everything. I would just reiterate, I wasn't part of this, but I lived in Edgefield when this began, sat on the Historic Edgefield Board, Neighbor Association Board, and was there in '05 when I thought, I think they would have built a wall if they could have between, the wall, they would have built a wall. And we didn't build a wall, which I highly recommend we not do. And I think the misperception of the population in Casey was always an issue. This is how we do affordable housing. This is how we should do workforce housing, and how we should do programs, and how we should talk about affordable housing and mixed-use developments, not slapping them in different places based on, you know, getting other things done. So I applaud the, I also lived in Chicago for nine years during the Cabrini-Green debacle, and watched people being shipped out to suburbs with no transit and no place to live, and no place to get back to where their children had been raised, and it was a shame and a sad place. So, I'm excited to be able to be sitting in this chair and have a vote on this, and to get to see this come to fruition. I think this is a great example of what can be done, and I think the $30 million is well deserved, and hopefully will be headed this direction as well.
Mr. McLean?
Well, this is a project that does, doesn't have any downsides that I see. Certainly a community that has pride, and they've had the opportunity to be part of the design on it. I don't want to short-circuit the other Commissioners, but...
Mr. McLean?
Well, this is a project that doesn't have any downsides that I see. Certainly a community that has pride, and they've had the opportunity to be part of the design on it. I don't want to short-circuit the other Commissioners, but I would like to have the opportunity for them to speak after this, but I'd like to make the motion that we approved Three A, Three B, and Three C with staff recommendations, but vote on them separately.
Thirteen A.
Thirteen, excuse me. Didn't bring my glasses.
Okay. So you...
Thirteen A, thirteen B, and thirteen C, but vote on them separately.
Okay.
But certainly, Commissioner, please comment, I just wanted to make that, be the one that made that motion.
Okay. So do I get a second, and then we can discuss how... Okay. All right, we have an additional discussion. Mr. Clifton?
Well, this, I like everything about this, including the criticism, actually, because I think it's always, I mean, one of the happiest decisions I've seen in the last few years is when the state sort of reversed themselves on tearing down Cordell Hall. This is a very different situation than Cordell Hall, and I'm glad we're going to have Cordell Hall, but I think in this situation, although the discussion was worth having and should always be had about throwing away lots of natural resources, lots of materials, you know, and we should always think about, is renovation part of it? I'm convinced that's not the case here, but I do appreciate the fact that that's been made a point for discussion. I have a question, though. Obviously, what distinguishes this major change and really makes it stand out in a very good way from other major changes in public housing of the last few decades is the absolute commitment to no net loss of affordable housing and low-income housing, and I very much appreciate that. That is, that's just really basic and tremendous to see that. I wanted to know, though, will there be people who are in Casey homes who will not be allowed back in because of some kind of rules change? Because frankly, that's happened under other administrations of MDHA, and perhaps other federal rules, I don't know.
Excellent question, Commissioner. No, it's against federal law. So the rental assistance demonstration requires return of any residents for any relocation to their primary site.
Okay.
So they have that right. However, comma, part of our relocation plan will include those two-hundred-plus families who are already on our housing choice voucher list by choice, by volunteering previously.
Okay.
So at some point soon, as they move in and take their voucher and find an apartment and we get them placed, we'll use that vacancy to assist us in our moving project forward.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Thank you. My only other thing is to say that for the residents who participated and for the staff and volunteers at Martha O'Brien, which has done such great work in this area for so long, I'm very grateful.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackshear?
It's a great project, I support it, nothing more to add.
Okay. Commissioner Diaz?
I think this is great. I think that, I just appreciate the work that went into this from all agencies and the community and the council member, and just the long process, I know it wasn't easy. I'm glad the council member did mention that you were trying to be as humane as possible with, you know, moving the residents, I think that's really great. I'm glad you made that comment, and overall, I think this is great, so I support it, too.
Council, Council Lady Allen?
Thank you, I will echo all that support, I know all the work and community input and time that's gone into this, and I feel like it's been a very responsive plan. I commend the group on your commitment to preserve trees. I volunteer in this area, and it has the best trees in all of Nashville, and that is what will bring people to want to live in that place. So I'd love to see a tree inventory before you do this, so we can see which ones you're actually going to save, because, you know, every time I walk around there, I am envious of the people who get to spend every day of their life hanging around the shade of those magnificent oaks. And that's just a tiny part of what makes this a wonderful project. Certainly, the expanded opportunities and the employment opportunities are all wonderful, so with the caveat that I'd love to see a tree inventory, I have full support for this.
Great. Yeah, I just want to acknowledge, too, that this is, I think that this has a potential to be a plan that's not just getting recognized tomorrow, but down the road is one of the kind of key opportunities for how we can revitalize public housing, and I can't wait to see how it works with really integrating people, you know, within one building. I think that's going to, that's very different than the way we've approached certainly public housing and affordable housing in the past, so really seeing how you get that social network building is going to be interesting, very interesting to observe over the next eight to ten years. So I applaud you. I can't wait to see these streets reconnected, that's going to be one of the best things to come, for those of us that do live in East Nashville and can't get through. So, yeah, I agree, I think this is a great project, and really glad to hear about the community participation and the interdepartmental relationships and support, so I'm in full support as well. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Ready to take a vote?
We have to vote on each one individually.
Oh, yes, we have to vote on each one individually, yes. We're going to start with thirteen A. Do I have a motion to approve thirteen A?
Motion to approve with staff recommendation thirteen A.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then, can we do thirteen B and C together?
Yeah.
Thirteen B and C together?
Another motion to approve thirteen B and C, staff recommendation thirteen A and thirteen B and C.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Should we take a little break?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We're going to take a ten-minute break.
I'm just going to take a break. [laughter]